I'd like to call the Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Do everyone have a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections or deletions to the minutes?
I'll move on.
Second. Two, thank you. All in favor? I oppose. Next up, District Attorney, Tony Jordan.
Thanks Chairman, good afternoon everyone. The one thing I had on my agenda, it's kind of a forecast of the weather that I see coming, or you know what we see on the near horizon, just to keep you all posted as to what we're seeing in the criminal justice world, both with changes that occurred a couple of years back that we're now functioning under, and things that we're seeing in terms of case or court interpretation of those. So really what's happening is we're seeing some things occur that are having some, that are either having or could have some pretty dramatic impacts on our workload. And as you all know, we don't have a caseload cap in our office, so we don't have sort of that pressure release that might otherwise be available. Most significantly, I think, are two issues that we're seeing around the state. There have been some early case law decisions out of lower courts as it relates to certain issues with the new discovery statute, Criminal Procedure Law 245, namely in the area of personnel records that if these trends continue and are upheld by appellate courts, could really have a huge negative impact, or rather, whether negative or positive, a huge impact on the workload in our office. Namely, it centers in the areas of founded and unfounded personnel complaints and similar. So just one of those things that we're going to have to keep an eye on and monitor. And the direction the case law is going is it is not enough to say, yeah, we asked, and what they said, they said, or what they didn't say, they didn't say. The consequence is dismissal of cases. And so ultimately, that is, you know, that falls on us and therefore is a responsibility that we'll have to shoulder. The other area, and sort of related to that, that we're starting to see develop, and we're hoping, there are also cases that go against this, but basically making DA offices repositories for all law enforcement who happen to cross or do work in the county, their personnel folders. And so that, you can well imagine, will become a significant challenge that will have to be met along the way. The second area is a rollout that the state, similar to the part I just talked about, the state comes up with these great ideas, provides zero funding for the implementation and the impact on the counties, at least in terms of our office, and that is the State Police Body Camera Initiative. And that is being rolled out pretty aggressively. We're seeing a significant number of our troopers that cover Washington County are now outfitted with body cameras. And what that means for our office, they, State Police represent close to 40% of our cases in terms of the criminal side. And so that means roughly 140% increase in the number of body cameras that, footage that we will now be getting. That has to be reviewed and edited for redaction if there's things out there that ought not be disclosed, et cetera. And that just, that will become a significant impact once that's fully implemented on our office and the amount of review. We're finding, you know, their policy is the camera goes on immediately and gets turned off. I think they turn them off when they, when the individual is no longer in their care or custody. So several hours with many instances, which is true for the Sheriff's Department as well. You'll often have multiple body cameras at the same incident. As technology improves, that also results in an increased number of body camera footage because they'll kick on when you become in the presence of someone whose camera has been activated. But all of that equals an increase in the necessary work. So we're monitoring that, but I anticipate that only increasing, not decreasing. And you know, and sort of corresponding with those two areas, it's not unusual, and it's sort of, it's what we had expected to see happen back in the fall of 2019 when we were looking out at this. And that is with the more you provide, the more litigation that follows. And that's certainly something that is bearing out. So that increases time on each and every case. So something we continue to monitor, but just kind of wanted to give you a heads up rather than have it appear as an emergency if things don't change or if things continue in this direction. Correspondingly or similarly, we're seeing an increase in motion practice in terms of post-conviction motions and appeals. A lot of that, you know, some of that's driven by the change in the criminal procedure law that is driving some relief that is being sought. And some of it just seems to be the nature of the beast. And I think the positive, so that there is at least one positive. So far, we certainly have avoided the significant increase in violent crimes that we're seeing, not only nationally over the last year, but certainly in New York State. If you watch local news, you know just what that's like, not very far south from here. So you know, that's, that's at least a positive, a positive highlight. So that's, that was all I had. It was more just to say, hey, we see this on the horizon and we're trying to prepare for it.
Bob?
State Police, by again. Who stores that data? If it's a criminal case, I mean, that's part of it, you're going to have to store all of that? Or is it, what is that?
So a, one of the things that came about with the State Police developing their body cameras, they worked with the New York Prosecutor Training Institute, which is our case management system provider. And they use Axon Taser. And I wish Todd Lemery was on or Ryan Mylott, because they might be able to give a more intelligent answer. But there's a combination storage where we have access to it. But I think it's stored on, and Jeff, you might, Sheriff, you might know the answer to this, but I think it's stored on one site, like the Sheriff's is on Axon Taser. I don't think it's in our local, so, but yet we have access to it. So you know, it's got to be stored somewhere, but I believe it's cloud-based. Am I correct on that, Sheriff?
Yes. Yeah, it's cloud-based, so, and it's unlimited storage in our case as part of the package that we received.
So for us, unless we need to download it for some purpose, we have access to it, but I don't think we're paying to store it. One of the things that we've, you know, the concern we have in the back of our mind is, is something we'll have to give some thought to, is if we ever decide as a county to leave Axon, we're going to have to make arrangements to get access to all of the stuff that was previously stored by Axon. But that, I think that concern exists simply because it's stored on an Axon cloud.
What if they have to provide it to the defendant?
Say again?
What if they have to provide it to the defendant?
So when we provide, just, I think your question is how do we provide it to defense? We, with our case management and disciplinary management system, we provide defendants with a link. That link then with access to everything that we've, we call it turned over, but within that turning over is a linkage to the cloud-based storage for body cameras. Everything else is stored on our site. The biggest cost to us as a county, I think, from a sheriff's viewpoint, is cellphone dumps. And they're a major part of a significant number of criminal investigations. And think about our own, your own cellphone, how much data is there, you know? A cheap, well, cheap is relative term. An inexpensive version of an Apple might be, what are they, 16 gigabytes? That adds up quick. Most people have 32 or 64 or 128 gigabytes. You know, that adds up quick as we dump those phones. And so that, we're trying to find different ways to manage. But we turn over a link that gives them access. At least as it relates to-
Going back, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, sorry, I was saying, at least as it relates to body cameras. Everything else we have to store, which is, you know, I think we used three or four terabytes of data last year.
Sorry, going back to the potential for the personnel files, the Giglio issue, would you only, if this happened, would it just be the disciplinary files that your office would have to keep track of?
That's where the fight is happening right now in courts. And it goes to, it's, you know, it is personnel, so it's not just necessarily disciplinary. There are, there are cases out there that talk about unsubstantiated as well as substantiated. That's all working its way through the courts. What we've done with our law enforcement, State Police are separate. They march to their own directives from a different place. But what we've done is we're working with our own agencies to address those issues so that depending on how the appellate courts go, we don't want to have a decision law coming down that would result in dismissal of cases. But there are some decisions that have been, shall we say, beyond the fringe of absurdity and way beyond the intent of the law. And there's others that are, probably don't quite meet the intent of the law. So we're trying to stay within those navigational buoys and stay compliant. I know the sheriff has, he undertook, you know, one of the benefits of the sheriff's sort of forward thinking in terms of how he staffed his office, he has someone internally who's able to manage this process for him. And we've worked out a system that is, I think, providing pretty current, like, pretty current within weeks. And it's thorough. We don't have that same level of control over the State Police, which is also a very mobile force, so that adds its own set of challenges. But you know, so it's a matter of having everything and pretty soon, and depending on how things go, it, you know, it, we, we'll see where the case law ultimately ends up. But it will be more than just you violated this policy and we're writing you up. You know, and there's a lot that goes into, I guess it depends on where you are in the state, Giglio or Giglio, depending on how you want to pronounce it. But it's a two-part analysis in terms of whether or not it ever gets used in court. But turning it over is absolutely required. And the thing is, it used to be a more of a trial issue. With 245, it front-loaded everything. So that's why you're hearing more about it than when it was a more deliberative process that came along as the case progressed, as toward trial, as opposed to prior to any real discussions of resolution.
Tony, we were talking about the potential impact of the clean slate law and how it could potentially affect law enforcement?
Yeah, I mean, there are some proposals that are getting pushed quite aggressively as the legislative calendar nears an end. There's a couple of provisions relating to parole and probation, early parole, early probation, and then what is being called the clean slate or second chance bill. I think one thing I would, I would say, as you hear things discussed about probation or parole amendments, people will use the word technical violation to suggest there are different degrees of violations. In Dan Boucher's world, every violation is called a technical violation. It doesn't, there's not a de minimis sense about that. So if it's a violation, statutorily it's called, or probably regulatory, it's called a technical violation. The early parole has, should have everyone concerned. One, they call over 55, they seem to consider that elderly. Beyond that, it, the most dramatic change there is it puts a burden on parole to say that the person won't live a law-abiding life as opposed to the individual who's incarcerated having to establish that they will. And I think that some of those things could really impact considerably the people that get considered for release, including Berkowitz, the guy that killed John Lennon, similar, very violent and troubled individuals would all be in that queue to be released. The clean slate bill, you know, I think the biggest problems with it, and we've spoken to the sponsors, no, I mean, we push hard for people to have second chances, and no one should be burdened unnecessarily by a criminal record. What the legislation does though, is it would completely do away with the, what are some of our predicate indicators for criminal behavior? Domestic violence, there's no carve-out for domestic violence. DWIs, we have, you know, really a properly scheduled increase in the significant of crimes or seriousness of crimes of driving while intoxicated. The law, one, every AI would be sealed and expunged after a year, which means, you know, how do you know what the person's history is? Misdemeanors would be after three years and with no judicial discretion. Basically, they strip away any judicial discretion. So our DWI laws say if you get your second DWI in 10 years, it's a felony. The ability to understand that would be taken away. And what happens is the legislature, the sponsors don't know the difference between sealing and expunging. Expunging, under criminal laws, basically you burn everything. You tear it up, it's gone, no one can have access to it. And sealing deprives access to just about everybody, other than law enforcement and prosecutors. The impact that could have is on our people that provide elderly care. You would never know that they have prior larcenies. School bus drivers, there would be no ability to check their background and their history for a variety of types of crimes. So we've been working with the sponsors and the governor's office to try to get them to, you know, they tout Michigan as why this is a great idea. And we've encouraged them to actually follow the Michigan example, which is a far better statutory scheme than what New York has come up with. New York would have no limit on the number of crimes that would be sealed or expunged. You know, at some point, someone who, you know, commits 10 crimes, convicted of 10 crimes, you know, maybe they really haven't turned the corner. Especially if they continue to get them expunged and sealed. So, you know, we're hoping to be able to stave that off. There's been some interest shown to actually work and come up with a system that, that better allows people to benefit and not be burdened by a criminal history that's stale or old. So, you know, we remain hopeful that we'll be able to do that.
I was thinking, Tony, as when I read the proposed law, it talked about, you say, expunged fingerprints, photographs, biometrics.
Yep.
So a lot of, a lot of the things that are needed to determine if someone's armed and dangerous or even who they are would be removed from the system.
They didn't know what biometric meant, you know? And I don't mean that in the sense of the literal definition, but we said to them, what do you mean by biometric? And they go, well, what do you mean? Well, what would be expunged? And what we explained to them that, I mean, there are many, there are as many people that are exonerated by DNA evidence or fingerprint evidence as there are that are ultimately convicted, you know, on cold cases. And so to do away with that, you would lose the ability to better track and move these cases or prosecute the cases or exonerate people that are, would have otherwise benefited from the existence of that information.
Thank you. Anything else, Tony?
No, that's all we had. Thank you.
Any questions for Tony? Thank you, Dan Boucher.
How you doing? Just kind of, what I had planned was a department update and kind of piggybacks on what Tony was talking about. Our office have been receiving notices about expungements of charges in our office. So it goes along a lot about what Tony was discussing with the new legislation. When, when they came in, we had to work with IT, because we have hard files, we have digital files that are scanned, we have database files that are in programs that the county IT department made. So what we have is, in our department, and I've discussed this previously when I was talking about scanning, we don't actually have case files. We have person files. So for expulsion, it's a little bit complicated because we won't get rid of the person file because they may have seven other cases. But we need to in some way get rid of the case or show that it's expunged inside that person file. So we worked with IT to mark it. There will be an entry, and it's in red, it's highlighted that they had an expunged charge. You know, show a record so we're not screwing up all of our database information. But we can have that destroyed if needed, literally like Tony said, burned if we need to. And that, that information can go away. But we had to work with IT to do that because this stuff came down pretty quickly upon us. And as soon as you wrapped your head around what, what this law meant, the notices were coming in from the Office of Department Administration. So we're still kind of dealing with that a little bit because we do have active files on people and maybe prior files were expunged. And we also have the situation of if the case is being expunged is an abscondor and there's an active warrant, you know, how do you handle that? If the case is pending in court, are you dealing with that issue? So most of what we've received to this point are old files. There are files where people have already gone to prison or they could have been cases from 10 years ago. So we're lucky, we have identified the small amount of files that are active that we are going to have to deal with. But most of them are going to be old files. It's, it's some interdepartmental filing systems and filing structure issues and a small amount of IT coordination. But that's what we're dealing with right now. And, you know, to go along with the sealing expulsion issues, Tony's right. If they don't understand the difference between sealing and expulsion, it creates quite an issue. Our office sealed files, we're still allowed to put certain sealed files in pre-sentence investigations for a judge. Expunged records, it creates a different dynamic for us. So we're working through all those issues at the same time. We're hoping for a little bit more clarity as time goes on. But that's where our department's focusing right now.
Anything else, Dan?
Not at this time.
Any questions for Dan? Thank you. Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the first thing I'd like to discuss, I guess it's probably going to ultimately be a request to move the personnel, is unfortunately, my confidential assistant is moving out of state. So I'm going to have to fill that position. I would like to request that we raise the grade from a 13 to a 15. It is, it's an exempt position, it's not a civil service position. So it's a, it's a pointed position. We certainly would look for current county employees to fill that spot. But with that being said, you know, it would be difficult, I think, to find somebody to do this volume of work that's involved in this position. Do mainly to the size of the agency with as many divisions that we have and the different tasks that are related for this position, it would be difficult to find somebody. The, the other part of it is the salary going from a 13 to a 15, it's what my secretary currently makes now due to her longevity. So it wouldn't be an increase in the 21 budget. So that's what I'd be looking to do with that position.
Do I have a motion to move that to personnel? Dave? Second? Grant, any discussion? All in favor to move the position to personnel?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jeff, you should probably just talk to Danielle prior to personnel just to verify the details on the grade change, just so she can bring that information to personnel.
Yeah, I have, I have talked with Danielle. I consulted with her as to which way to go with this, to fill this position. And, you know, I think this is the way we should start looking for someone to fill the position. So yeah, she's aware. Thank you.
To backfill a position and move it from a grade 13 to a 15?
Yeah, it wouldn't require a backfill, I don't believe, because it's a, it's an exempt appointment.
To move it from here to personnel, did I get a second motion?
Yes.
Okay, we're good. All in favor? I oppose. Move to personnel, Sheriff?
Okay, and then the second is more so a heads up, kind of along the lines with what the district attorney was saying. First, with the jail, we are having significant difficulty filling positions within the jail. And I know that this is basically a national problem, in my opinion, related to unemployment, the ease of unemployment as opposed to working currently is what everybody's saying. But we are short-staffed with correction officers. We have correction officers routinely getting stuck on shifts because someone calls in sick or someone's off and they can't fill it. You know, it does, it affects morale, it affects a lot of different things. We are in negotiations with the Corrections Union, starting now. Basically, we had a preliminary meeting a week or so ago. So basically, I just wanted to update the board that, you know, we're having problems. And not only that, but I'd also like to take a minute to praise the work of the men and women inside the correctional facility. You know, from going back to last year when, when COVID first hit and when we started dealing with COVID, we were one of the few counties in the state to go all through 2020 without positive cases with inmates. We had a couple, I think just a couple, staff members, but no inmates until 2021 and until a month or so ago. So to go through that time period when the rates were going up and up and up and to stay at zero, basically, and then, you know, like I said, until early part of this year when we had a little bit of a uptick with some cases. I can't say enough about the work that the men and the women in this, inside the correction facility and the nursing staff have done to keep those numbers where they were. And just as an update, as you probably know, we did have, like I said, a little bit of an outbreak a month or so ago. We've been testing every Friday. The last test on Friday, this past Friday, was zero. So it's the first zero staff, zero inmates that we've had over the past few weeks. Like to keep it that way. We're actually testing today, and we'll need a test tomorrow. So happy to report that, the fact that we're at zero. And it has a lot to do with, like I said, the men and women back there, but also the maintenance and all the people that have helped us with the cleaning in public health and the vaccinations that are being done. So all that combined, I'd like to hope to think that we're, we'll stay at zero. But I did want to update you on that. But it, also with the staffing concerns, it also includes nursing staff and kitchen staff as well. So we plan on doing some media-type, something out with the media, some kind of a, along with social media, like a plea, basically looking for work. But like I said, you know, I know, as you all know, there's a lot of different types of businesses who are having problems attracting employees, and we're not, we're not left out of that. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay.
Not so much a question. I just wanted to add that after the discussion with the sheriff regarding the need for correction officers and other staff over at the jail, I have spoken to the personnel officer. And we are going to continue the discussions on recruitment and what we can do to really vamp that up. Just try to get you the staff that you need over there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
And just to give you an idea, normally in the past, when we, when personnel would announce a civil service exam for correction officer, we'd get, I don't know, 100 or so or more people sign up. And this past signup for the test that's coming up, they had nine, nine people sign up for correction officer. So a little concerning, but we'll, we'll work through it. On the, on the patrol side, again, we have, we have 150 people sign up for deputy sheriff exam. And I think we had 55 sign up this time. So the roadside is not immune either, which kind of brings me to the patrol issue. In more of a heads up as far as next year's budget, that I will be looking to add more patrols. We, as you know, all the different towns, we get numerous complaints about traffic. It seems to be there's more traffic for whatever reason. We're having more traffic accidents. There's a lot of traffic related stuff. So we first started looking at, how can we have dedicated patrols that could be out enforcing traffic laws? And responding to these accidents while still being able to respond to calls for service that are criminal in nature. Which seem to go up every year as well. And especially we saw during a pandemic that we saw a lot of domestic violence type cases. And now this year, our cases are increasing as well. And I think it's due to the fact that people are getting out, doing more and, and that could be cooped up and whatnot. But we're just, we don't have the people that we need to cover 876 square miles with, with four patrol cars. So, you know, we have to look at this and see what we can do to be able to respond to these calls for service. You know, we, as you know, I'm a proactive type sheriff, not a reactive type sheriff. But when I look at the calls for service that we're having, and just over the past few weeks, I took a look at a few different days where we would have within an hour, an hour and a half, so many calls that they're just backed up. They're just going from one call to the other. And one of those days, we had a, I think it was a five alarm fire. At the same time, we had a fatality accident. And that just strains the whole entire department. And if you also throw into the mix that we're short on a roadside, we're down three deputies. We have a deputy deployed that we're going to be getting back shortly. We have one in the academy that we still won't, we won't get for three or four months. So we're going to have to have three that are going to go into the next academy. And we won't see those three for six months. So even though our, our deputy sheriff staffing total is 24 right now, we're not at 24. And very seldom do we have a full staff due to retirements and other things that, that go on. So oftentimes, if someone calls in sick or we have someone on vacation or whatever, we might have three cars out for the whole county. Which, you know, we, we just not, not enough to handle the call volume, not enough to, to handle the different things that we're handling and the more complex crimes that we're handling. And, and as the V A has stated, you know, all the different things that go along with it. It's just the, it's, it's a more difficult job to perform for sure. So that's more of a heads up as to when we start talking about the, the, the next year's budget. I also sent out the annual report today. We finally got that done. Again, due to the pandemic, due to just being busy, we, we had a struggle to get that completed. And we also created a personalized report for each of the towns. It'll show the statistics and kind of what I'm talking about. So what I would ask is that you look at those annual reports that were not only the, the county annual report, but the reports that we did specifically for supervisor. And then at the next public safety meeting, if you have any questions about that, rather than go through it all today, basically. If you had any questions about that, we'd more than happy to, to talk about it. And also it is up on the website, so you can let people know within your townships that, that annual report is out there. And I would add that, you know, one of the things that we saw as a result of the governor's executive order was that we, we do have a lot of support for my office in this, in the county, which was very pleasing to hear. And it, you know, I'm not going to lie to you, I was a little nervous putting a, a survey out there where you're, you're asking people within the county, you know, how, how your office is, is doing their job. And it was very pleasing to see that the results were positive. With the resounding answer that we saw is that we don't have enough deputies and we don't have enough patrols. So that, that definitely was part of that. And again, it's just kind of a, a heads up as to what we're going to be looking to do. And I think that's all I had.
Sheriff, quickly, and I, I also talked to Roger about the slow-moving vehicles and mostly the, with the Amish. There were some, I got calls from sub-supervisors about what can we do at the county level. I talked to Roger and about the different traffic laws and our limits. And Roger, can you go ahead and just discuss that for a minute?
I can, if you'd like. And I had a discussion with the D A. I missed the sheriff's call, but I sent them the research that I did. So the vehicle and traffic law is, is set by the state of New York. And there are requirements for vehicles under 25 miles an hour to, on the current books. They're required to display either the triangle or at night, a light. And especially for horse-drawn vehicles, a light or, and white, what they call white reflective tape. So that there would be visibility at night. So those laws are already on the books. But there are several counties that have sent requests to the state because they realize, I think we should too, that it's not really our call as to whether or not those are enforced. Because we can only do what we can do on our roads. And, you know, even setting speed limits in some cases is difficult for us to do at the local level. The problem is, is that different sects of the Amish have different viewpoints as to what they want to put on the wagons, the horse-drawn vehicles. And none of the attempts to force those on Amish sects anywhere that I've been able to find have been successful because of a sincerely held religious belief. But we do have the power on our roads and to request on state roads that the, the yellow signs you see with the carriages, I'm calling them carriages, wagons, whatever you want to call, be erected. And I think it's going to be a matter of our local population's going to have to get used to something that they don't or haven't seen before. And as more and more folks come, you'll get more and more used to it. But it's really not a choice we have at this point. And I'm not trying to throw it on the sheriff saying he should write a ticket for everybody that doesn't have an orange triangle either. Don't get me wrong, because I think that would be problematic as well.
James?
Thanks, Roger, for that. So I think the big concern that I've heard from constituents is it's not, it's not having them in the community. It's just that the, a lot of time during the day, especially towards the nighttime, when it's, when it's starting to get dust, you can't, you can't see them. So i- if there's a way that we can, you know, go to the state and add for more safety on those vehicles. I, I understand what you're saying, Roger, but there's, there's a safety concern there. And I think that's evident in, in what happened in Whitehall and I'm concerned in, in Jackson and White Creek.
Many, many counties have drafted requests to the state to, to increase those requirements, and we could certainly do that. And there is currently a requirement on the books.
Dave?
I, I think the problem, thanks Jeff for doing some patrol work up there last week. The real issue is that a lot of the traffic of the Amish now is on Route 4, up going from Whitehall into Fairhaven. And they also have farms up on Golf Course Road, the road to nowhere, as some, some people call it, up in that area. And the traffic coming through there is by and large not local traffic. It's out-of-state traffic. It's tractor-trailers all the way through 4. And they simply don't realize they're there. I did write to the state to ask, to put up a lease, put up some warning signs. There's buggies going through there. And the transition from New York into Vermont, Vermont to New York and that way, that intersection of Golf Course Road really comes up very quickly. And there needs to be more warning signs there because people don't see them or realize they're coming up there. I've had people say that it is a speeding, speeding issue. When Jeff had a couple of trolls up there last Thursday and Friday afternoon, it was not a speeding issue. There was a lot of traffic, but I think it's the traffic coming through there. It doesn't realize what the population is and there's, and there's Amish coming through there. It's too bad they couldn't not, they couldn't, they couldn't use Route 11 across there. Because going to Vermont that way is certainly a lot less dangerous. You don't have the traffic. You don't have all the tractor, tractor-trailers. But my concern is, is a lot of local people know, but we need to educate people from, on vacation. Trucking traffic goes through there, that there is a dangerous situation there.
Also, Sheriff, I saw on your Facebook, you put on some information about slow-moving vehicles to get the word out.
Amish don't visit the website.
Yeah, the Amish don't.
Yeah, we did, and, and that's, and that's another, you know, point that, you know, to do that, we had to put somebody on overtime to go up and, you know, specifically take care of the traffic up, up in Hampton. But we're also looking to try to set up a meeting with, with the Amish and, and, and kind of get ahead of this and kind of have a, you know, start a dialogue. To Mr. Griffith's point is to let them know. And, and we sent over, I'm sure you all saw the little, little handbook, you know. We ordered a bunch of those, so we'll bring them with us. But I think that together with the enforcement and then, you know, just going up and trying to talk and going down to this other part of the county, doing the same thing. That's how we can hopefully work together with the Amish and, and make it a little safer, along with the speed enforcement. And we did leave our, we did put a speed radar sign up there so we'll be able to collect data off from that as well to see just what the speeds are up in that area.
And, and pretty much I've gone around and I've talked to several from the Amish. And we kind of have a point of contact in town who deals with them since I got here. And I, I talk to her a lot to go talk to the Amish. But I talked to her about the triangles and things like that. That is not something they'll do. It's a religious issue with them. I talked about reflectors and put a little light on the, on the back. So I think each supervisor has to try to find a way to reach out to them to, to, to talk about the, the, the need for the reflectors and the possibility of a tragic accident occurring, which we don't want with that. Dave?
One other thing is I think that the residents need to be educated too. I have a couple that said, why don't we go 35 miles an hour on Route 4, which is 55 miles an hour? And they blow their horns, they pass, many create dangerous situations. Well, I think they need to be educated, 35 miles an hour is an unsafe speed. And they're causing a lot of the problems.
With that, because I know I talked to Sheriff Murphy about some traffic enforcement. I think in the next budget, he's putting to have some dedicated traffic officers for, for the purpose to relieve patrol and actually have.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem that we're, that's the problem that we're having is we're seeing these, these calls. And then when we have a serious accident, you know, the patrols are tied up at that accident. We can't answer the calls. And then on the other side of it, in criminal cases, which we just seem to be having more crimes that are more complex, that require investigations, investigators, that kind of thing. And that ties up the patrols so that they can't go out and do traffic enforcement. So it's a, we get it on both sides.
So Roger, do you think we should put something together and send it to the state? Like so many other counties have done?
If, if you'd like to, you know, somebody would like to get together with me and try taking a stab at a resolution. But I, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, what we're going to request. Because as I said, right now in the regulations that support the vehicle and traffic law, there's a statement that there's a regulation that says every vehicle drawn by animals shall display on the rear either a slow-moving vehicle emblem, which is your orange triangle, or a lighted lantern with a red lens at least four inches in diameter. You know, it gives the height above ground that it needs to be. And 72 square inches of high-quality white or whitish gray reflective tape. So that's your regulation right now. If you're, you know, what, if there's more we want to ask them to do, by all means, we should draft a request to the state to do that.
I think a lot of it just may be signage on state roads. Like, like David had mentioned. So.
And also, Don, I, I keep thinking about this, and I think I wrote this about the, the Amish, we like the tour of the Baton Kill and with the Baton Kill River. You know, there's certain events that we have that bring in a lot of people from a lot of different areas that aren't used to the fact that we actually have a different group of people that live in Southern Washington County now. And I think that education piece is really important because I think the day is June 19th. And if you get a thousand competitive racers, and then you have the Baton Kill River that's full to the brink. And Sheriff Murphy is trying to put together a, a group of people to just even monitor what goes on over there. And then you add in the Amish, and quite frankly, I don't know how they do it. It's, it's a, it's a crazy, you know, logistical nightmare. And so thankfully, they've worked very hard at trying to, you know, look at these different events and try to step up and, and do it. And they are, they are doing it. But it is a massive undertaking on their part. So I think they really do need that help and not necessarily have it going to overtime. We know when they happen. We can plan ahead. And it doesn't, and I'm sure the sheriff's already doing that. But, you know, I mean, you look at those three different things going on for, I think it's a one-day event. And are we ready? Sheriff, are we ready?
We'll be, we'll be ready.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any, anything else on Dave?
I mean, this isn't only an issue with the traffic. I mean, I saw that a house went up in my, went up in, up in Old Hampton this weekend and, well, last week. And they had no permit. You know, it's still an issue is that unless we put teeth in this, they're not going to, they're not going to comply with their laws. And it's not just one thing, it's multiple things. I think we need to deal with the whole thing at once and not just one issue and one issue and one issue. Because building permits are a huge issue and have been. And if we're not requiring the Amish to comply with their permit process, how can we comply? How can we make other people comply?
Litigation points to the fact that the Amish have what are called sincerely held religious beliefs. That don't allow them to comply with those codes. If somebody else wants to come in and make that same claim, I welcome them to do that. If somebody else wants to come in and make that same claim, I welcome them to do that, but there's many, many cases throughout the United States about this issue. This is not, it's not, we're experiencing, it's new to us, but it's not new to every place these folks have lived.
Yeah, two things, completely different topics that we discussed on here. Number one, I think that, I think we're really off to discuss and support the idea of a traditional dedicated traffic work. That is something that I've seen slipping over the past 20 years in the county, and it's not anybody's fault, the state police are backing off a little bit, and Jeff is doing what he can, but it's tough, you know, I call him, you know, when the fellows of our guy, we have quite a problem over there, and he comes and works for a couple of days, but, you know, the guy can be there for 10 minutes and he's off on a call, so it's tough. So I would support him on that, and think we ought to talk about that. The other thing I think we ought to be aware of with our Amish communities, is that we've got three or four different sects represented in Washington County, and each one of them got a little bit different take on things, a little bit different, you know, level of priority on decorations and this sort of thing. So, you know, one size fits all might not work, you know, very well either, so I think that's a more complex issue than we think, I think it takes two seconds to work, you know, I deal with, I'm my guys and Don deals with his, we do what we can do, but.
No quick answers to that. Any other questions? That must be fast. It was quite a thought. Was that a yes vote?
Don had one other thing before the six-year's gonna go. What about boat patrols this summer? Any boat patrol?
Yes, yeah, we actually sent a couple of new deputies to the training. It's pretty extensive training too, right on Lake George, so yes, we definitely, you know, as, it won't be easy, but we do get some money from the state to help with that. So yes, we'll be doing boat patrols.
Early on, it looks like we've seen a huge influx of people on Cassiana, for example. I think two Saturdays ago, they had a thousand boats launch, and that's just bizarre.
At that point, you could walk across the lake.
They're in an all.
Any tales for Sheriff Murphy? Okay. Mike?
Yes, thank you. I have a few updates on family court. One, family courts gradually returning to in-person where it has been virtual for the last year or so, and that would be in all matters. The neglect matters have been in-person for a little while, it's kind of gradually returning to in-person for all matters. I did want to make the committee aware and the board aware, there was an ILS competitive grant for a model family court representation office upstate. It's, there's only one award available, I believe it's going to be awarded to a metropolitan area, and we've discussed this with the Harrell Herring Settlement Team, and I do not believe it is a grant we should apply for. I believe the, what's required to apply for it would be poor use of resources, considering that it's very likely to go to one of the metropolitan areas. So, but what the ILS team did indicate is that there'll be future funding available to all counties with respect to family court, so we'll be on, we'll keep an eye out for that. Case load is going up and returning to more normal pre-pandemic levels, and I would let you know, revenue year-to-date's $460,048, and everything else is going well. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Anything for Mike? Thank you. It's Mike Grant here, do you have anything, Mike?
Just a quick update on that annual ATI plan needs to be approved by Criminal Justice Advisory Board, so there'll be a Zoom invitation going out tomorrow for June 9th at 2:00 p.m. Also, next month Sheriff and I will be presenting on the Pre-Arest Aversion Program that we've been working on, and Community Service Program is in full swing. The cemeteries were taken care of last weekend, or the Memorial Day weekend, we're moving into the garden, we have painting projects in the Champaign Cambridge, and also the Georgie Museum will be doing a little work over there with our juveniles, so that's all I have right now.
Thanks, Mike. I'd like to thank your community service team, they did a good job for us at the Baton Rouge Park. It's hasn't looked so clean in a long time, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Don, I'll pass it on.
Other business, we, this month we had talked about the coroner collecting samples, and I asked Roger to look at the liability issue of it and the legal issue of it, and let Roger explain that, and then Bob explain his side, and then we can take questions from the supervisors and then determine if we want to send it to finance. So Roger, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to make sure we're not talking about sides, I'm not taking a side here, I'm raising issues for you to consider.
Liability issue.
Yeah, right, so there is a liability issue. Right now, we have no obligation to collect this kind of information. It is a service, as the, one of, you know, Dr. Sikarica or Bob said back when we're talking about, so when we undertake a new service, we undertake obligations that we not, we don't normally have at this point in time, in terms of preservation, storage, properly collecting samples, things like that. So there is no individual obligation to any member of the public unless a specific promise is undertaken to take, to assume that obligation, so we'd be suing a new obligation. Therefore, if we are unable to fulfill that obligation, there would be liability and/or possible damages as a result of that. That's one thing to consider. Undertaking new obligations is always going to come with those kind of things, if that's an obligation the board wants to undertake, but they can do that. The second thing I think you ought to consider is whether this is going to be a generalized thing in terms of every person that comes through the coroner's office. Most of the National Association of Coroner's materials that I've seen on this issue talk about doing it in specific instances where death may be unexplained or not easily explained right away, and that this would be available for somewhat, some future study, should new technology become available. But creating a database of simply every person that comes through, I think again, is inadvisable, because now you have a database, and it, I know it's not, they're not sequenced until you use them, but in essence, it is a repository of information. If you're going to assume the obligation to maintain this repository of information, you have to make sure it's secure, you have to make sure that it's safe from access, safe from damage, wind, weather, water, whatever you want to do. So this is a, this is, it was presented to you, I think, as you just buy a couple cards, take a few samples, throw them in an envelope, and nothing happens, and it's a little bit more than that. Again, if it's something you choose to do, great, you choose to do it, I just want you to go into it with the understanding of what, you know, what's your, what liabilities or possible liabilities you're assuming. That, that.
Roger, the liability, is it significant, is it, the potential of it low? If we didn't have a sample, would it?
You're talking to the guy who said, this is the easiest thing you'll do all day, and then spent three hours talking about it, so I don't know is I'm the right barometer for how much liability you're assuming. It doesn't matter until somebody comes back, so if you're saying, you know, I'm going to have this card available, and then 20 years from now, somebody comes in and says, wow, my family has a history, I'd like to be able to research it, then you'll find out. So really, if you do it, the devil's going to be in the details as it always is, and that's going to have to be your policy, your procedure for accessing it, things like that are going to have to be very carefully looked at, and that's how you would minimize it. You're not going to eliminate it, but that's how you attempt at least to minimize it. You know, risk has a couple things you can do, you can minimize it, or you can transfer it, or you can not assume it in the first place. So not assuming is a guarantee, you know, is a done deal. If you don't assume the risk, then you don't have any risk. You can't transfer it to anybody else in this situation, so you have to attempt to minimize it using your policies and procedures.
And the coroner did put together a policy and procedure with that, basically relying on court subpoenas to reduce the information. Also, Roger, I, we were talking about this, I looked at the post-mortem samples for genetic testing, and it said ideally a specimen should be saved in all medical examiner coroner cases in which autopsy is preferred, performed. However, many offices function within assistance where space equipment and financial considerations go for inhibit achieving this practice. So they recommend doing it all, and then they talk about the minimum of unexplained deaths, but Bob?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
You want to talk about, yes, your policy that you developed?
Sure. First of all, I have to apologize for Dr. Sikarica, he was going to be on with us today. He had to be in court this afternoon, his, he was supposed to be in court Thursday, they moved him up to today, so he had to be in court. One of the things that we looked at is that this is a trend throughout the country. Dr. Sikarica is, some of you may have known, is really well-known throughout the country. We're very fortunate to have a forensics pathologist here. A lot of doctors and a lot of attorneys count on him throughout not only the country but the state for advice, so he knows a little bit about what's on the national level, and that's where this is coming from. This is a trend that we're seeing throughout the country, and this is why he's recommended it and why they're using it more in Saratoga County. But basically, we look at it as, a sample is a sample, we're not collecting a data, any type of DNA profile. We're taking a blood spot on a card, it's no different than putting blood into a tube or vitreous, or urine into a tube, or taking a tissue and putting it on a slide. Nothing can be done with that until it's processed, as Roger was saying. This would serve when it's needed, and if it's never needed, it would not be used. So we look at it as just part of, you know, kind of our everyday practices in our policies and procedures, that all blood, urine, vitreous, and any other specimen would be retained in place in appropriate means of storage, and for that sample to be collected by a forensics pathologist and an ordered autopsy under the authority of the coroner. And there would be a chain of custody, date and time collected, deceased name, date of birth, collector's name, case number, hospital number, and the doctor's number, and then the coroner's name. So there would be a specific process for this to be done. And I don't know the legal side, I just know that I've had at least three people ask me how to go about getting a DNA sample for someone who is passed, and I've had to tell them that we don't do that. That's disheartening on my end. But again, you know, I will respect, I respect what Roger has to say, and I understand the legal, I'm not an attorney, I'm just saying that I think from our perspective, it's a service, if necessary, we could provide. The other issue that we're dealing with in this day and age because of pandemic, but it's just because of cost, is that we are having more and more cremations done. And unfortunately, you know, the day of bringing up a body, getting a coroner to bring up a body and take a sample is pretty much over, everybody's being cremated these days, and I feel we have to do our due diligence out of fear that we have these samples available because of the amount of cremations that are being done. And again, I want to reemphasize, this is not a DNA profile, we're not keeping a profile on anybody, we're providing a sample if it's requested by a subpoena in a family. So I guess that's about all I can add to it at this point.
But that, the National Association of Medical Examiners, in their conclusion on this, they just talked about how examiners have a responsibility to determine cause of death and also to promote public health, and in their, in their paper, they, they talked about keeping sample DNA, does vault especially in the future, and I think if a body had to be exhumed, I don't know if having a DNA sample would save us that cost, or someone that cost, but are there any, any questions for Roger or for Bob?
I have a question, if I could, please.
Go ahead, Dana.
I apologize if I missed this, but there hasn't been, I don't think there's been a great deal of discussion about cost, location of the storage, and the volume of storage to the county. I think I heard when we were speaking about this last month, I was under the impression, I heard one of the, either Bob or Dr. Sikarica made a comment that Saratoga and Warren County currently, they store DNA samples, do they, is that correct?
Yes, they do. They're stored for the year at the hospital, and then at the end of the year, they're stored in the coroner's office.
So when you said the coroner's office, because I looked up the Warren County coroner's office last month, and I saw a lot of contact numbers with personal numbers, I didn't see an actual office number, location at the Warren County site, do they actually have a site for the coroner's office at Warren County?
I honestly can't answer that, I don't know. I know that.
Last month, they had a coroner's site at Warren County. Did I hear that correctly last month?
They, they, they're like us, they, I'm not sure where they store their stuff. When the, when the policy was written, it was written by Terry Cuomo, who is now the undersheriff, or when he was coroner, wrote the policy for Warren County on the DNA samples and cards. I know that they're stored at the Glens Falls Hospital, I don't know what happens to them after the year.
So what kind of volume are we talking, Bob? What's a storage space for a typical sample?
A sample card is probably maybe two by four inches at the most, and it's in a sealed, once you take the blood sample, it's just a blood spot that goes on these cards, and then the card is sealed, and then they're put in a plastic sealed envelope, so they're not very big, you know, the size of maybe two pieces of paper stapled together, that thickness if most.
Roger, do you know what's the retention time for these kind of samples? Did you investigate that at all, and if you said so, I apologize?
Yeah, they're not, they're not on the state records retention schedule that I could find. The indication from what I heard the last time, I haven't seen the policy, so I don't know if there's, if it's addressed in the policy, maybe Bob can tell you that, but the implication I got from last time was it's basically going to be infinite.
Wow. So this is the last question, of the counties, and we have 62 counties in the state of New York, Roger, do you have any idea how many are retaining or records retention for this kind of thing? No idea.
I do not.
Okay. Okay.
Bob might.
Bob, you know that one?
I know of Warren and Washington in this area. Fulton County is in the process of, because the coroner there is on the national board and she's writing the policy for Fulton County. So I know they're in the process of doing it at this time.
You mean Warren and Saratoga?
Warren, Saratoga, Fulton County, as they're saying, the coroner there is on the national level and she's writing a policy for Fulton County as well. I did reach out to the, I'm on the board for the State Coroner's Association. I did reach out to the president to ask him if he knew of an idea of how many counties in the state. And unfortunately, he didn't get back to me in time for the meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Don.
And, and also, I talked to Melissa and they are working on establishing a, a place, an office for the coroner on campus here.
That's correct. I've reached out to the coroners and they've gotten some feedback as far as what kind of office equipment they would be needing, how much office space. I've been working with Matt Jones, see if we can come up with something. Right now, it's possible, we're looking at possibly putting them over at the Burgoyne Building in hopes that public health will be over there at some point. And they'll be in the same vicinity. The office that they go into may be temporary, but we'll see how that goes. But we are working on that.
So you would have a place to store the records that wouldn't be in coroner's homes anymore? And these samples after a year would come to the office here and have a secured, secured spot here in the coroner's office? I'm guessing.
I, I know that, I know that blood and tissue samples are stored for 20 years. So, you know, if, if it pleases the board, we could also make this, you know, something that could be held for 20 years that would fall in line with the tissue samples and blood for vitreous and urine sample.
And Bob, where are those samples stored at the hospital?
The hospital, currently, everything is stored at the hospital. The slides go back to Doc after they're, after the tissue is transferred into a slide. And then he keeps them for 20 years.
Thank you. So.
Is there any chance down the road that this will be taken over by like a Department of Health with a registered vital statistics? They're doing death certificates, they do birth certificates. This seems to be kind of like the same venture rather than having every county do it themselves. Why wouldn't we want to do it through the state?
I could see the state coming down with regulations. Once they determined it to be, they wanted a statewide program. But a lot of the, like the vital statistics registrars are also in each individual town. So what you'd be more likely to see is not a state program, but statewide series of regulations for us to do it.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't think they'd assume the obligation, let me put it that way. And they could come down with this completely separate records retention schedule as well. I just don't think it's on the radar. That's probably why it's not on the records retention schedule.
Any other questions? It's the, the, the cost, I think was $600 for two years, is that correct, Bob?
Excuse me? Well, can you repeat that?
The, the cost?
Yes.
For the sample cards and the, the holders were $600 for two years?
Yes, that's correct. That's based on, on the number of autopsies that we do per year.
So is there any, any other discussion, any other questions? I don't know if I want to move this forward to finance or approval for the $600? Or any thoughts, any motions for that moving forward? No motion? So being, no motion to move it to finance. It stays here. Any other, any other questions, any other business? Being no other business, the meeting is adjourned.